We have limited time and we want to make sure that we get everyone's questions in, which we have on the agenda. Thank you so much, everyone. This is our second call. Let me introduce myself real briefly in our committee. I'm June Taylor. I'm Chair of the Economic Development Committee, but I don't do it alone. I have the committee here, which is comprised of Eric Sinenberg and Alec Isingson. They are both here on the call, but this would not be possible without help and support from the city of Beechwood. Mayor Martin Horowitz is on the call here and the team here from our Economic Development Department. And I'd like to turn it over to the mayor to welcome everyone right away. Mayor, please.
I really do appreciate what you're putting forth, June, and getting everyone together. This is now the second meeting, and I think there was a tremendous amount of good information that came out of the first meeting. I think it's all helpful to our small business owners. I especially want to thank Michelle Gilchrist, who I'm looking for here and can't quite see her, but...
I'm not on...I don't do cameras, so I'm on the phone only.
Yeah, yeah. People tell me I have a face for phone only, too. So for those of you who don't know Michelle's connection to all this, I'm not sure either, but she is amazing at giving us information stemming from the governor. I want to thank you personally, just take a minute to thank you personally. And you know, I've thanked you in emails, but it is a very hard job following day to day what's going on, and we truly respect what Governor Dozier and Dr. Acton are doing. And I think we all feel it's a very nice, professional, scientific response. But whenever we have a question, an order is not clear, or how it would be interpreted, we look to Michelle, and she very quickly gets us information. She's also been distributing summaries of the mayor's press conferences, of the governor's press conferences, and some very excellent fact sheets from Ohio Department of Health. A number of them we've distributed to our residents. I sent June and Carrie the one on small business today. We'll put that up on our website. So thank you, Michelle. Thank you for everything.
You're most welcome.
It's tremendously, tremendously appreciated.
Thank you so much.
And to our other speaker, we also thank you because so much of this depends on SBA and your involvement, so thank you for being here today.
Mayor, thank you so much for the comments. Let me say that we have two speakers today. Michelle Gilchrist is here from the governor's office. We also have Raymond Graves, who is here from the SBA. Because we...both of our speakers have a limited amount of time, we're going to let Michelle speak first, and I'm going to ask everyone, please, to put your telephone as well as your computers on mute, please, so we can limit the background noise. And since the mayor has done a wonderful introduction of Michelle, and I'll just add that she is definitely the governor's eyes and ears in northeastern Ohio, I'm going to let Michelle have the floor now, or the microphone, I'd rather, and go ahead and start. And then, I think, Michelle, you also have some of the questions I've already emailed you that have emailed in, and then we'll take it from there, okay?
June, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Okay, so I will go over a few things that try to address some of the pressing issues that are out there at this point. But before I got started, I wanted to personally thank June for agreeing to serve on the governor's new minority health strike force that was just recently formed as a result of looking at the numbers of individuals who have been negatively impacted health-wise from the coronavirus. And those numbers are skewing unfavorably, especially to our minority communities. So thank you, June, for agreeing to serve on that strike force. And then, now I want to get into the CARES Act, which is a federal piece of legislation. And this is the third phase of the federal stimulus relief. I know that there was a question about getting resources down to the local government to help with lost tax revenue and sales tax revenue and income tax revenue and other resources as a result of this pandemic. So let me explain what the CARES Act is going to do for Ohio as we currently understand it. This Phase 3 of the CARES Act is going to allocate $4.5 billion to Ohio. Of that amount, 45% of it, or $2 billion, can be allocated directly by the U.S. Treasury to local governments that are over 500,000 individuals in population. So what this means is that the city of Columbus and five counties in Ohio, Franklin, Cuyahoga, Summit, Hamilton, and Montgomery, are going to get money directly sent to them from the U.S. Treasury. And based upon estimates that are being used from the latest census data and a formula that was put into the CARES Act, it looks like between $750 and $800 million are going to be directly allocated to these jurisdictions. And my understanding is, is that Cuyahoga County, as a county, did apply for this funding. So now we're getting more...now we're going to get into the sticky part of this. So that remaining portion of that local 45%, which is $1.2 billion, would go to the state of Ohio for disbursement. We at the state level have been in constant phone calls with the Department of Treasury. We've been talking with both Senators Brown and Portman, and we just last night got some new guidance on how the state is going to be able to distribute those funds to local governments. So right now, the governor's director of the Office of Budget Management, Kim Murnix, is going through that latest guidance with her team to see how we can get those funds down to local communities such as Beechwood. Now, the other sticky part of this is, if Cuyahoga County is receiving money on its own from the U.S. Treasury, are they too somehow going to share their portion of these funds with local governments in that county? And at this point, it seems like that has yet to be determined. And let me tell you what those funds can be used for. So those funds can be used to pay for necessary expenditures that were incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus. What we have been told by Treasury is, we cannot use those funds to cover lost revenue. So if the state were to give money to Beechwood, we're still trying to determine if we can just give that money directly to you, if it has to be done, or if it has to be done in a different way. But we...but you cannot use that money to backfill lost revenue as a result of coronavirus. It has to be used for expenses that are related to coronavirus itself. So that's one of the points that I wanted to talk about. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is that local government taxing districts such as counties, cities, townships, and schools are going to be receiving from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation checks that will be mailed out over the next five days that will...that are from dividends that the Bureau would have kept, but instead they are going to be mailed out to local governmental taxing districts. So if Beechwood is considered a local government taxing district, you should see some type of check in the mail to you. I'm being told that the dividend equals approximately 100% of the premiums that you paid in policy I would encourage you to all watch today's press conference by the governor. I know I typically watch it at 2:00 p.m. on theohiochannel.org. Today, the governor will have on there an environmental engineer who is part of the team that is working on the reopening plan, and he is going to do a great job explaining the different precautionary measures that businesses, governments, and other entities that will have to be taken in order to reopen, and why certain businesses will be allowed to reopen in the first phase as opposed to other businesses that won't be allowed to reopen until later phases due to the health concerns, how well you can disinfect the way...the square footage of particularly a certain types of businesses, how crowds usually gather in those types of businesses. So it will be a very informative, scientific-based, rolling-out plan to try to get the economy moving, but making sure that we're trying to keep everyone safe at the same time. I'm sure that you also heard that schools will be continuing to function remotely for the remainder of this year and will not reopen. No decision has been made on schools for the fall as of yet. I know there was a question asking about recreation centers and pools and things like that. I think that as this rollout plan gets announced, I believe Monday of next week, you will see some answers to those questions. My thought is, is that a recreation center, a gym, would probably have more control over how many people are allowed in, how many people are allowed on equipment, maybe you space people every third treadmill, every second machine. But in terms of outdoor pools with kids gathering and things like that, I suspect that that may come further down the line in terms of our rollout announcement. I have no...nothing factual telling me that, but just based upon the request that everybody wear masks and things like that when they're out, you know, in public or at stores and things like that, I think it's going to be more difficult to have an outdoor pool open, you know, early in the summer season than it is for a traditional rec center. And then, the last thing I want to share with everybody, in case you missed the announcement yesterday, is that we have been able to get FDA approval on a new testing reagent. And because these reagents have been extremely limited, Ohio and other states have had very limited testing capacity. The governor spoke with officials at the FDA on Sunday and was able to get approval as of yesterday for a new version of the reagent for a specific company's testing machines, which those machines are used by most of the major labs in Ohio. So in the next couple of weeks, you are going to see in Ohio, the numbers for testing go up dramatically. We are still working on trying to secure the antibody testings, which will help us also enable people to say, "I've had the coronavirus strain. I probably now have immunity to it for some length of time," which should then allow you to feel more comfortable once things start to open, you know, to go to certain places and participate in certain activities. Again, I would encourage you all, it is updated every day with new information, to go to the state's website, coronavirus.ohio.gov. And I think that is all I had, June, at this point.
Michelle, thank you so much for that overview. Mayor, do you have a response?
Okay. No, I just... The only thing I would point out, I mean, Michelle is accurate on the BWC. For Beechwood, we are self-insured, so we actually do not get a refund on...
Okay, okay.
But other cities that are state-funded would certainly get, what is it, a million sixths or something, or billion sixths?
Yeah. I mean, we're trying to just find those little pieces and pops to help, you know, make a difference in some way that we can.
And that will make a difference to a lot of cities with state-funded workers' comp. We just went a different route as some larger employers do. But we're thinking of coming back, so...
Okay, okay.
We might be back with you.
Okay.
And Michelle, that was very helpful, as we have received a lot of questions from our citizens regarding our community assets as it relates to summertime and a lot of parents wanting to participate in a lot of our activities that we have here. So thank you so much for...
And in you...I didn't mean to interrupt, but in you saying that, I know that the group that is looking at the rollout is also looking at day camps and summer camps and things like that, especially for parents who might be part of the new businesses that will be going back to work, especially if they have to physically go back to work on how, you know, what then can they do with children who are still at home because schools are not in session.
That's right. That's right. So we will be anxiously looking to get direction from them, but you've given us some very good indicators, at least with regard to water. Michelle, from a time perspective...
Yes, yes.
From a time perspective, Michelle, you have about four more minutes. Can you take any more questions, Michelle?
Yes, yes.
The microphone is open. Citizens, are there any more questions for Michelle? Go ahead, please.
I have a question, June and Michelle. Hi, it's Tammy Schneider. I own Cleveland Yoga Studios here, and one studio in Beechwood and another couple out in the areas. And I know that there's been guidelines for fitness centers, but what about areas where we're doing group fitness together, where there's no equipment? Are there guidelines for square footage? Like, I know the six-foot distance rule. For example, my studio space is 1,400 square feet. What is there...are there some sort of guidelines that we are offering for those types of businesses?
So what I would say is, and I know everybody is anxious to get this information, the way this has been explained to me is that when this new information comes out on Monday, there's not going to be anything regarded anymore as an essential and non-essential business, that this will be in columns and phases, and that you will be able to find yourself in that column, and it will give all of the guidance for you. And it's probably going to break it down into, you know, no more than X number of people within a certain amount of square footage. So what I would just ask you to do, I know people want to plan and everything, but Monday is when I am expecting all of that information to come out. The other thing that we're telling people that are currently considered an essential business is that even though you're operating now under certain guidelines, you will still need to comply with new guidelines that may be put upon your current industry type. So that will all be coming out on Monday.
Okay.
So I know in the current stay-at-home order, they've got those safety requirements with the six-foot distancing, you know, the hand sanitizers, the different things like that. So I suspect it's going to be that plus more things. And recognize that all of these guidelines are being developed not by just the governor. Sitting at the table is the Department of Health, other members of the health and medical community, but also folks from industry. So when we're talking about like health and fitness and things like that, you know, we have people there that are representative, hopefully, of all the different health and fitness types of activities, or they're consulting with owners of those types of establishments. So we're trying not to make these decisions in a vacuum.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Big question is, you know, will people need to be wearing masks when they're exercising? You know, so...
I...and I don't...I'm a runner, so I don't know, because I also wear glasses, and that creates a bit of an issue when you're breathing that heavily and you can't see. So I understand. Let me do this. Let me give you my email address.
Okay.
And as questions arise, feel free to email me. I try to return the emails in 24 hours, but there are some days that I just can't get to them until, you know, 36 or 48 hours.
I understand.
So my email...my email for everybody is michelle, and that's M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E. dot, and I will spell the last name. It's G as in George, I.L.L.C.R.I.S.T., the at symbol, governor.ohio.gov. And governor and Ohio are completely spelled out.
June, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Or Michelle?
Yes.
I'm already getting calls from residents saying, "Well, how are you going to..." You know, if a restaurant opens up and 50% of the tables are only allowed to be occupied, what, you know, what are you going to do to enforce it? So when these guidelines come out, are they going to be...do you know if they're going to be health orders from Dr. Acton? Will there be some element of instability?
They're going to be...yeah, my understanding is, they will be health orders from Dr. Acton. The way that this is going to have to be enforced is that if I walk into that restaurant and I see that they are not distancing the way they are supposed to, that they're not wearing the mask and taking the necessary precautions, then I, as a customer, or I, as an employee that worked there, you know, will call that local health department to report that. And, you know, I, as a customer, will probably utilize social media and other methods to inform people that this restaurant is not, you know, following the rules. And I think most places want to follow the rules. And I think that if they're going to want customers to come in and feel comfortable, they're going to have to follow the rules.
Thanks.
If I could add a couple of things and mention a couple of things that need to be clarified as the mayor made a very interesting question. You know, it's one thing for the state of Ohio to create these guidelines. The other thing is, how do they...how do they get officiated? How do they get orchestrated? How do they...where's the oversight from the requirements that have to come now down, I would assume, down to the city level? I can tell you that over the last couple of days, and you may have heard it, you may have read it, that there was going to be, for example, and the may...and even the president mentioned it, that, "Oh, we're going to have an opening of a mall called Nebraska Crossings in Omaha, Nebraska." And I can tell you that I know the mall because I happened to have designed it years ago, but the fact of the matter is, it was a disaster with the way this individual owner, he's a single person, was going to open this project tomorrow. And ICSC, which is International Organization of Shopping Centers, has now asked several people, including myself, on guidelines on what should be put in place for when these shopping centers should open, in this case, whether they were open-area shopping centers or enclosed shopping centers. And the issue had very much come down to the local level. And fortunately, it was between ICSC and the local health official, they were able to change the opening for the mall. It's not opening tomorrow. It's a soft opening. There's going to be no customers, supposedly. But the question that I raise is, how does that become officiated and the dollars that it takes to then manage that from a local level and starting to do the planning? Let's say, for example, in our community, we have Beechwood Place, and they intend to open in four weeks. Well, what are going to be those guidelines? How are those things going to be...how are those things going to be orchestrated? And I don't think that can happen on the state level. It can be talked about, the guidelines, from the governor's viewpoint and from Dr. Acton, but it's going to become a major planning exercise that needs to be orchestrated, in this case, between the city and...fortunately, our mall is owned by a...and Beechwood Place is owned by a large development company. But let's talk about for a moment all the office buildings that we have in Beechwood, where we have multiple tenants. How is that going to be orchestrated? They haven't talked about those kind of details at any of these sessions that I've heard. I'm retired, but I'm looking out for our Beechwood residents and for our...and for our Beechwood associates and workers that come to work every day. And when you go to an office building that is a multi-tenant office building, how does that get orchestrated? And how do the people, whether they're residents or non-residents, feel comfortable coming into an office building? And let's just say, for one example, we have two buildings called Signature Square. They have multiple tenants in that building. How does one feel safe going there? There's an optical. How does it... There's an optical, how does a, how does a resident feel comfortable walking into the building and what do they have to do to go through? And I think that there needs to be outlines.
And that, that's, yeah, and that's going to all be outlined on Monday. And once those outlines are shared, recognize that a lot of these places are not going to be able to open in this first phase. There's going to be multiple phases and this is all going to have to also be coordinated with the county health department, your city, and some, I know some cities have their own health department, but, you know, they're all going to have to be working together on this.
Right. And, and at this time, Michelle, I know you have to go to your, to your next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Michelle.
Oh, it's 1:30. Yep, thank you so much, June.
Okay.
And please, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns, don't hesitate to send me an email.
Okay. Michelle, thank you so much, and all of our citizens, thank you, our mayor thanks you, and we'll be in touch, okay?
Okay, thank you, June. Take care, everyone.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
All right, bye-bye.
All right, our next guests, and let me move on to our next guest because I know that everyone wants to talk about our favorite subject, which is, which is money. We have two guests that have been able to, to join us. We have Raymond Graves, who's joined us. Raymond is a lender relations specialist with the Small Business Association. Remind, I just need to remind everyone, please mute your microphone, please, if you're taking other calls. James, please mute your microphone, please, okay, because I can hear all your background noise there. And Raymond's been on the line here, he is with the SBA. And one of the things that he has been able to do very well is, he works with lenders to encourage them to extend credit to small businesses and show them how SBA products can be helpful to mitigate risk and make lending into this segment more profitable to them. We also have on the line with us today, we also have Tom Frazier. Tom, are you on the line? Tom, are you there?
June. Hi, June, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Tom is CEO of.
Great, yep.
Great, thank you, Tom, for joining us as well. Tom is CEO of the First Mutual Holding Company, which includes First Federal of Lakewood, and he's also vice chair of the Ohio Bankers League. And Tom, thank you so much for joining us as well. I wanted all of our citizens here in Beechwood to have two perspectives. And this is very important because we received a lot of emails, the committee received a lot of emails about not only the SBA process, but also trying to understand for individuals that did not have bank relationships, how they might be able to navigate the process. So our committee wanted to be able to give a breadth of really knowledge from both perspectives. So I will be quiet now and allow Ray to talk from an SBA perspective and Tom, and then let you guys ask the questions. Ray, please take the microphone, thank you.
Sure, thank you so much. Hopefully you can hear me okay. This is Ray Graves from U S SBA Cleveland District Office. You know, I think a lot of people have already had the opportunity to investigate the SBA's response to the COVID crisis. So I'll just provide a little bit of, you know, sort of brief background, because sometimes as I might do meet some folks who do have some misinformation about the programs. And so I'll just sort of talk off the cuff about, about three of them, and then let's, let's get to the questions, I'm sure there are quite a few. Sort of the first response SBA had was the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Product, EIDL, also called IDL. And that was what we had sort of off the shelf when this crisis began. The Economic Injury Disaster Loan is what has been available for, for years when there's a crisis, we have physical disaster loans and these economic injury ones. The Economic Injury Disaster Loan is something that you apply for directly from the SBA. It goes through SBA's website, sba.gov/disaster. That was put in place very early, I think Indiana had it before we did, but we were one of the, the first states in the industrial Midwest to have access to that. You know, my understanding is that millions of people applied to that, and that program has become very heavily oversubscribed. But what it's designed to do is to help a business get from one side of a crisis to another. So think of it in terms of like, you know, 12 months of working capital for things like rent and payroll and so on. And the, the benefit is that you get 30 years to pay the thing back at a rate of interest that's pretty decent. I think the rate of interest for a business was 3.75%, and the time period to pay it back is 30 years. And typically, if you've got a working capital loan, you know, it's going to be repaid over five or seven years. So 30 years to repay a working capital loan is a pretty decent amortization, lets those payments be made pretty, pretty simply. Those loans would go up to $2 million. And then through the CARES Act, we changed that a little bit and said, hey, we're going to change it so that you actually get an advance on the loan, which is going to be a grant, and that's going to be delivered to you expeditiously. And, you know, it's a relatively small portion, but at least we would get cash out in the hands of small businesses pretty quickly. So that was the IDL advance grant, doesn't need to be paid back at all. So after IDL, we did a couple more things. One was SBA debt relief, so folks who have an SBA loan or get a new conventional or sort of typical, I guess I should say, SBA loan, are going to have their debt payments paid by the government for six months. So that's going to be pretty nice, a lot of debt relief through that. So if you already have an SBA loan with a bank, you should be in contact with your bank to make sure that you're on the same page with not making payments for the next six months and letting the government do that for you. And the third thing we brought online was this thing called the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP. What that's designed to do is to allow businesses to rehire their employees. And the SBA would essentially pay off those loans for that borrower if they adhere to certain requirements. Now, unlike the IDL program, the PPP is one that is engaging the private lending community. So rather than going to the SBA's website for one of these PPPs, you actually go to a local lender and you apply through them. They make a loan, the SBA guarantees 100% of the thing, and then eight weeks after you get your loan, assuming you adhere to the requirements, you can get the entire amount forgiven. So that's pretty nice, because it allows a small business to rehire the people and the government's footing the bill for the employees. Does it solve for the case where a business has no revenue? Well, no. You know, if you're not allowed to be open and, you know, you don't have any revenue coming in, bringing your employees back to work doesn't necessarily help you much, right? But if you're the kind of business that can be open, but you're having, you're struggling and you're not, your revenue isn't what it was, it can keep your people employed, right? And there are certain circumstances where an employer becomes aware that their employees aren't able to get unemployment for some reason, and they care about those employees so they want to, you know, keep them on payroll. This allows them to do, do that for an eight-week period. So it's a nice program, folks are really interested in it because of that forgiveness aspect. If they do the right things with the money, it's forgiven. But if there's a stub left over, if that is to say, if not all the amount is forgiven, then that, that company has the next 18 months or so to pay off that remaining unforgiven amount at a rate of 1% interest. So it's, it's very affordable. The amount of a PPP, like the amount of the loan itself, which you're requesting upfront, is itself based on two and a half months of last year's payroll. So it is, in and of itself, it's supposed to be eliminated by two and a half months of payroll expense from, from last year, so during your sort of typical time period. So it is itself, just like IDL, a working capital program designed to replace expenses, not designed to grant business owners their sales or profitability. There's a slight distinction there. Hopefully that provides a little bit of sort of framework around these, these three programs. The IDL program, directly from the government, the debt relief program, designed to ease the pain of, of current SBA debts that the folks have, and then finally, this PPP program, which is engaging private lenders to deliver access to capital to folks who do it.
That, that was great, that was great. I think that it might be good to have Tom interject at this time, or would you, citizens, would you like to ask any questions regarding the programs? How about that?
So, so June, I'd be glad to amplify Ray's comments in particular about the Paycheck Protection Program, if that would be okay. And that might, that might anticipate a few of the questions that I'm sure are on all of our small business minds here.
Yes.
And I'll take just about a moment. So first of all, thank you for having me, so on, on short notice, and thank you, Mayor, for your leadership within the Beechwood community through, through this crisis. And Ray, you and I haven't had a chance to talk since this started, but on behalf of my team, thanks for your local offices' responsiveness to all the banks that are headquartered here in northeast Ohio. So I know you've worked Herculean hours to get this stood up. So this is, I'll give, share with you a, a small bank's perspective, maybe I can also offer some perspective for those who are in the queue and waiting for funding from some of the larger banks as well. And to also provide with you an update on some facts, which you may already be aware of. The IDL program has been topped off, or it's in the process of being topped off, I should say. It's, I'm watching on C-SPAN right now, the House is taking up the measure right now. I'm hoping in the next hour or two, both the additional funding for IDL, which I think is 10, an additional $10 billion, Ray, I might be wrong, for, for businesses for IDL, and then another $50 billion or so for agriculture and some others who might have been impacted. And then as far as PPP goes, approximately another $310 billion in addition to the $349 that was originally allocated. And this has been trunched off into a big bank bucket, a mid-sized bank bucket, and a small bank bucket as well, so that the funds get allocated efficiently in this next round. So it may not feel great, having gone through this process as a small business, and certainly as a bank that, and we're a mutual bank, that means we're owned by our, by our depositors in our community. It's been hard to get this stood up just because of the urgency in which this has rolled out, but I also know if you're waiting for your funding, there's not enough time in the world to get it to you. So I truly appreciate that. I just have a couple of perspectives and a couple of maybe tips as we're waiting for this funding to come in. So it's my understanding that if this gets passed today, that the Office of Management and Budget and the SBA would need about a day or so to process the new law, which looks substantially similar to the existing law, to get it stood up. And it's not clear yet when new apps can go in under this, but the best guess would be within 24 hours, but it may take a few days beyond that. So that's just a little bit of perspective on, on timing. A few things I wanted to share with you are some tips, depending on where you are in the process. And so let me share those with you. If you've received a notice from your bank that your loan was previously approved in round one, and you have an SBA loan number from your lender, you can expect to have your loan documented and funded, I'm sorry, and funded regardless of the release of this additional round of funding. So consider yourself safe, just be patient, let the process work itself out. There's a fair number of operational things with Bank Secrecy Act and anti-money laundering to get the funds out. But it's my understanding, at least in the case of my bank, if you've been funded, I'm sorry, if you've been approved, we funded about 94% of those, and I would anticipate that the rest of those would be out in the next day or two. And talking with some of my larger bank peers, that's kind of a similar, a similar rhythm. They may not be quite as far along because, just because of the operational nature of it, but within the next few days, you should get funded. If your loan application, I apologize for the background sirens, I'm, my office is down the street from the hospital here and the fire department, so just bear with the background noise for a moment. So if your loan application is in the round two queue with your lender and you have all of your documentation in, but it hasn't been approved yet, just confirm with your bank that you're in the queue and that you know your status. We can't submit your application into the SBA system until it's been reviewed by your bank and the portal from SBA is open for round two, which would be in the next 24 hours to a couple of days. So check with your bank. If your application was submitted, another scenario here, but you haven't heard from your bank, try to reach out directly to your bank to secure a status update. And if you're, if you're considering applying in round two, reach out to your current bank to talk about the fastest path forward. So it may be difficult to get in the queue right now or feel comfortable, but you might want to check with your bank's website to understand the documents that you would need to have required to submit along with your application. I know many of the bigger C Corpses, bigger meaning fitting the definition of the program, companies that had CFOs, that had professional accounting staff, it was relatively easy for them to get the documentation in. I fully understand the plight of a sole proprietor, that's many of our customers, or subchapter S corporation, who, with a person who does it all on behalf of their five or six employees, how difficult it is to get that information organized. But the requirements are roughly the same for both small sole proprietors and larger small businesses as well. If you need help, check with your banker. And if you don't have a bank, or your bank is not an approved SBA lender, it is a bit late in the game to get in the queues, but I'd be glad personally to help you find a lender who could help you, including my company or a few of our smaller affiliates that we have. So our company's organized that we're a collection of five different mutual banks that work collectively. And so we have a little bit of capacity, so if you're stuck in the sense that you don't have a lending relationship, we'd be glad to help at this point. No promises, because the queue is a little long, but I'd be glad to, to offer my, my help to get you in the right direction. My final comment is, if you're already working with the bank and you're in somebody's queue, that's going to be your best spot to be in right now, because you're, it may not feel great, it may feel like you're in a line where you can't see the end of it, but you're going to be in a better spot than you might be elsewhere. A reason for optimism in, at this late hour is because of the efforts of our local offices, because of Ray Graves, because of Congressman Shabbat in Cincinnati, and Congressman, I'm sorry, Congresswoman Beatty in Columbus on both sides of the aisle, who have influence on House Financial Services. The Ohio banks were a little bit better positioned to participate in PPP, and they took great care to make sure mountains were moved, that the Ohio banks all over the state were able to participate. I know that rings hollow if you haven't been funded yet, but I could tell you, based on expected payrolls in Ohio, Ohio punched way above its weight, and I want to say, Ray, you probably have better statistics, maybe 70% of our businesses have been funded at this point, or at least the dollars have been funded. That may not be proportionate to the actual numbers of, of businesses. But we fared much better than other states in this process. I want to say we're fifth or sixth overall in the country on that percentage basis. So I'll stop there, and would be glad to answer questions about how the banks are operationalizing this and to offer my assistance in any way.
Great. I'd like to open the microphones to citizens for questions, and I know Alec Isaacson, why don't you start with the chatroom question I know that we received, please?
Sorry, took me a second to unmute, I'm here. So we've, I think the question was partially answered, we've got somebody who's asking if they can still apply for funding, if any of this, which of the programs still have availability in them, and then where one might go to get info on how to apply.
So I'll take a first crack at that. Unfortunately, IDL and PPP are out of funding right now. The IDL application process is through sba.gov/disaster. Unfortunately, that portal is down right now, as far as I know, because we don't have funding for it, so we, we took that one down. You know, Tom was saying his best guess was 24 or 72 hours after law signing, we would have some PPP availability again. Again, our internal portals on that are. Again, our internal portals on that are also shut down. So folks can't, you know, banks can't submit applications in. SBA is not keeping a queue. If there's any queues being kept, it would be, you know, at the lending institutions if they're doing that. Some are, some are not. As far as information on how to apply, your local Small Business Development Center could be helpful. You certainly should be getting in touch with your favorite lender and getting their application process, getting an application materials request for a PPP so that you can, you know, get your documents to them if they are accepting them. The SBA debt relief is a separate part of appropriation. So that is still up.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Great. And just to build on Ray's response, so Ray's in the spot where he can't comment necessarily about the likelihood of appropriations being granted because he can only respond to what's in the law. So I'll build on that just a bit. So assuming the House takes, they are taking the measure up right now to offer additional funding. Once that funding's there, it will take a few days possibly to get that ready for PPP. There are resources, I believe, on SBA's site as to who are approved 7A lenders. I think it would be an extraordinary assumption that almost all of them are participating in PPP. So I would check there as well or contact your bank. Or if you're not quite sure where to go, if you work through June here on this call, or I'll give out, better yet, my email directly so I could try to get you pointed in the right direction. My email is T like Thomas, F like Frank, R like Rainbow, I want to be optimistic, A like Apple, S Sam, E like Echo, and R like Roger. So it's TFraser@ffl.net, like FrankFrankLarry.net. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. I can't promise you it'll be the answer you want, but I'll do my best to get you pointed in the right direction. And in your particular case, I might, our company might be able to help.
Thank you so much. And this is June Taylor. What we'll do is we'll make sure that our economic development team has all the contact information that our speakers provide today. It'll be at the city as well. So if anyone wants to obtain contact information, we'll have that too. Next question.
Hi, this is Koshik. Koshik Goshal. Thanks, everyone, for organizing. This is very helpful. And Ray, good to hear your voice again. A question for you regarding eligibility for the loan to be converted into grant and talking about PPP program per se. It's 2.5 times your monthly payroll cost. Do you have to show that it's paid out in two months or in 2.5 months payroll cost? That is, you have to, like, you know, pay that out plus other costs in two months or you can have it paid in two and a half months to employees and qualify for it to be converted or at least considered to be converted to a grant? Thanks.
So the question sort of relates to the forgiveness calculation on the Paycheck Protection Program. We are, it's been said many times, flying this airplane and building the airplane at the exact same time. And that's cold comfort to folks who are trying right now to figure out, having been told by their lender, we need to close your PPP. Gee, you know, what exactly are the exact terms of forgiveness, especially if I am going to have trouble bringing back employees? The two and a half times that Koshik just mentioned is, it's relevant to the amount of the PPP loan that you'll be calculating. The maximum amount of PPP loan is generally going to be two and a half times your average monthly payroll from last year. So, you know, that could be whatever it is, $100,000. The forgiveness on a PPP loan is determined eight weeks after your first disbursement. And the amount of the forgiveness is dependent on a couple of things. One is maintaining employee headcounts and employee compensation levels, and also making sure that you're using at least 75% of your proceeds on payroll. So you're limited in terms of what else you can use it on. But a business that hires people back, that tries to maintain headcounts and payroll and uses their PPP on, at least 75% of it on payroll, should be pretty confident they're going to get the entire amount forgiven. There are so many different scenarios and different things that could happen that I admit that's a little bit general. But the rules from the SBA on exactly how that forgiveness is going to work in every scenario, it just haven't been written yet or haven't been published yet. I know teams are working on that, but we're trying to get things done one thing at a time. And that is the best answer I've got for you. I hope that's helpful. Maybe Tom could actually speculate more, but it's, that's what I got.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Right, I think, no, I think, Ray, you summarized that pretty well. And I would just suggest another 25%. You use it for business-related purposes such as mortgage payments, rent payments, utilities. If you talk to your lender or if you go to the SBA site, it'll describe the other uses beyond that 75% for payroll.
And just to build on that, the Act is pretty clear that interest on debt is eligible, but not the actual payment. Tom, I just wanted to make sure you agree with that.
Yep, thank, yeah, thank you for that clarification, Ray. You're right, so.
Yep. It's clear that it's like designed not to help a business owner sort of like build equity, but help them sort of tread water, I guess, would be the thing. You know, utilities and interest on debt and, you know, rent payments, that sort of thing. The important thing is, you know, folks in the lending community and in the small business community aren't clear on exactly what can be paid with these proceeds. And the way the rules in Act is written is it should be expenses incurred and amounts paid within the eight-week period after your loan closes. So business owners have asked me, well, you know, can I, can I pay debts that I owe from before the eight-week period? And I would say, you know, it's not completely clear, but a conservative reading of the Act is that you cannot. It should be things incurred during that eight-week period and paid during that eight-week period. So bear that in mind.
That's good. And one other, one other resource on the SBA site and the Treasury, and I believe in a similar way on the Treasury site, is there's useful Q&As and FAQs that are published four to five times a week, it seems, as the program changes and its final rules and regulations are promulgated under the law. They're published to the federal register. And the appropriate agency websites, SBA and Treasury, have done a good job of communicating those. But you're not going to get those on your own. So if you're a business owner using PPP, I'd make it part of your regimen to check the SBA site every day as these more technical rules are put forward.
Thank you. Are there, are there any more? We're about two minutes to two. And I think I, both of our speakers, I know, need to wrap up, as do many of our citizens.
I do have a quick question as to the SBA loans. I'm thinking ahead and I'm wondering, will they be bundled and sold on the secondary market in the future?
Well, IDL loans wouldn't be sold, but PPP loans could be sold. I don't know whether a lot of lenders will sell them. It doesn't make, it doesn't seem like it would make a ton of sense to me that they will sell them, but maybe, especially if the lender doesn't have a lot of capital and they've made a lot of them. Maybe Tom would have a better perspective on this. I know it's possible to sell a PPP, but I'm not sure if it will be sold.
Yeah, I think the law permits the sale of those loans to the secondary market,[1605.90]